Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's Schools Forum. Could I just ask everyone on the call to keep your camera off and your microphones on mute unless you are being asked to participate in an item? Thank you very much. So, welcome everybody to the meeting. A particular welcome to our two new members that we have today from Academies, Jennifer Hunwick and Stephen Dewing. So, welcome to your first meeting. Today, we have apologies from Daniel Jones and Andrew Berry. So, otherwise, thanks, everyone, for attending today. Our first item is the minutes of our previous meeting on the 30th of June. So, if I can ask that we go through that page by page for accuracy and matters arising, please. So, if you can shout out if you've got anything that you need to raise from page one and two, page three, page four, page five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. So, no one has raised any issues. So, if everybody's happy, we'll accept those as an accurate record of our last meeting unless anybody shouts otherwise. Super. Okay. Thank you very much. So, we now move on to Paper B, which is Approval of the Central School Services Block Budget for 2324. And I'll hand over to Sonia for this item. Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you, Alison. Morning, everybody. Rather gloomy day today. For those of you who are new to Schools Forum and or those don't know me, my name's Sonia Harbin, and I'm the Strategic Finance Lead for Children and Young People. So, my team are the ones that a lot of you would know probably as the School Accountancy Team. But they don't only support our school leaders and the schools, but also the budget managers within the council managing core funding and the DSG held by the local authority. So, the first paper we're going to look at covers the DFE guidance, which requires Schools Forum to agree the budget split that's recommended for the Central School Services Block or the CSSB. So, the CSSB, the historical element part of that is subject to a 20% reduction imposed by the DFE. So, this is going to be next year will be or the 2324 will be the fourth year that savings of 20% have needed to be made. This is the first year, though, that those savings are being met corporately. So, there's no disturbance to the services received by schools. In the previous years, we've had to agree as a forum where those savings will be made or how we can change the funding streams. As in previous years, the services who receive an element of funding from this grant provided a detail as to how the grant supports the impact of the services, particularly focusing on how that support is partnered with schools. It's just really important to remind forum members that this, the CSSB block, is a discrete block budget within the DSG funding. So, there are four blocks within the DSG, and the CSSB is a separate block, and it's not top sliced from school budgets. So, it represents funding that in previous years was agreed outside of the school funding block a number of years before the new funding form was implemented. So, some of them, as an example, particularly the early help was, I think, was about 2013 as a result of the ending of the extended Schools Grant. So, what we have to do here is go through, and each individual line has to be agreed and voted on by the Schools Forum to agree each individual sort of service element of the CSSB. So, I'll open up to any questions. Obviously, if you've got a direct question that is related to a service, we do have all the service leads with us who can take any particular questions.
Thanks for that introduction, Sonia. So, does anybody have any questions about the content of this paper and, in particular, any of the service areas that we need to vote on in order to sustain the funding from this block for them for the forthcoming year? Any questions before we move into the voting process? Thank you to all of the service leads who are on the call today for your contribution in setting out what your service delivery is through this funding and what the impact would be if this funding didn't continue. Because, of course, in setting that out in the paper, you have given us all a lot of information already that we've been able to review in order to make our decision in a moment. So, I'm just giving everybody a final chance, but it doesn't look like anybody needs to ask any additional questions in addition to the information that was provided in the paper. Thank you.
Alison, there's a question in the chat. Sorry, Alison, there's a question. Stephen's asked a question in the chat about clarifying the savings.
That's interesting, because that hasn't hopped up into my chat. So, apologies that I've missed that. My chat must be behind. Stephen, would you like to ask your question, please?
Hi, Stephen Dewing. I'm new here. So, sorry, I'm CFO for Sapien Tier Education Trust.
And you're welcome to put your camera on while you're asking a question if you would like to, just to clarify the procedure here.
I'll do that. I'm just a bit thrown by the paper, and sorry if it's my misunderstanding, because you said the savings required are being funded from the wider corporate budgets, but there's a fairly substantial cut to the education learning line, which then later in the paper describes quite a lot of statutory responsibilities that takes on. So, it appears to me there is a saving, and that's why the vote. And I couldn't articulate or gather from the paper what impact that has, those savings.
So, the saving is coming from the Central School Services Block. But what is happening is that money is then being supported by core funding. So, the managers, so Adrian and Julia, won't see any reduction in the total amount of money they've got to spend on their service. It's just funded from a different funding stream. So, with regards to the Central School Services Block, it represents a saving, because we don't have to fund that element from the Central School Services Block. But obviously, it's now coming from core funding, which isn't part of what we have to vote on. Does that make sense?
That does. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
So, County Council core funding on this occasion are stepping into the breach, which isn't always the case. But in this particular year, they've recognised the need to sustain that service. And although we've got to make a saving, because there's an expectation from the DFE that we're making these savings from the CSSB every year, the service isn't going to be impacted, because the funding is coming from the County Council, just to add a bit more clarification.
There's nothing to stop the County Council from using its core funding in that way. So, they've recognised the importance of these services and how the impact it would have on schools. And it's, you know, so they've just agreed as part of our medium term financial plan that this is a core cost pressure on services that are delivered within children, young people, that is a priority. So, that's why they're covering it with core funding rather than funding from the CSSB.
And I'll bring you in, Adrian, as well. Thank you. You're still on mute, Adrian.
If I can get my microphone off mute. Yeah, I was just checking in, because Karen's asked a question too, and I'm not sure whether you can see that, Alison. Just before I sort of, because Karen might want to ask the question, because this may have partially answered it. And going back to Stephen's question, just adding to Sonia's contribution, clearly, we've got a range of statutory functions that simply don't change in spite of the fact that the Department for Education are removing funding from us. So, the corporate funding of this area helps significantly, because actually, it gives us a sustainable future to meet those statutory functions. What those statutory functions will look like in the future, we're not sure. We wait to see what the education strategy for the government will be. But this certainly gives us a stability for the year ahead. I'm hoping, Karen, that partially answers your question. But do come in. I'm sure the chair won't mind you coming in if you want to elaborate on that.
Yes, you've sort of answered all my questions, really. I was just very concerned that from the paper, it looked as though education and learning would be taking a bit of a hit. And I know from a range of experiences how important the services.
Indeed. Thanks, Karen. And apologies, I've relaunched my chat. And for some reason, since 9:35, I'm getting no new messages. So, Sonia and Adrian, can I please rely on you to keep an eye on the chat for me? Because for some reason, my Teams is misbehaving this morning. So, thank you.
Alison, mine was doing exactly the same. I hadn't seen Stephen's. I've just refreshed it, and it's come up now. So, I think it's just maybe you and I have got a bit of a lag.
Looks like it. Okay, thank you.
There's a question just popped in from Amanda.
Amanda, I haven't got that.
I'll keep a close watch. I'll be the question watcher.
This is very frustrating, this chair, that my Teams has taken this moment to decide to misbehave. So, many apologies, everybody. But Amanda, please, please raise your point.
I was just asking, really, how many children in care the virtual school are overseeing at the moment, and what size the virtual school team is, just to get some sort of perspective on that, please?
Matthew, would you like to come in and answer that one? Thank you.
Yes, very happy to answer that, Amanda. So, Virtual School has an extended remit following the September 2021 guidance. And that's an extension on the remit we had for previously looked after. So, in response to your question, it is looked after children, and I can answer that bit. But it is also previously looked after children and children with a social worker. So, two sort of extensions of duty in quite a short succession. And there are, and it's the first time we've had close to 550 children in care of statutory school age at the beginning of the school year. And the virtual schools cohort sort of moves like a Nike kick, really. Sort of, we lose year 11 statutory school age, and numbers kind of continue to rise throughout the year, up to about 620, 630 statutory school age children. And we've also got a post-16 branch, and that kind of moves from about 300, 320 post-16 children in care. And the team has nine sort of full-time officers. We've gained an additional post for the extension of duty for children with a social worker. And we also have someone who has that remit for previously looked after children. We've got a very well-supported virtual school office as well, which has some part-time, turn-time, I don't know, endless. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Matthew. That's really helpful. Are there any other points anybody would like to make before we go to the vote? Bearing in mind, I can't see the chat. So, please put your hand up or speak to me if you want to say anything.
Nothing else there at the moment, Alison. I'll keep a close eye and alert you.
Lovely. Okay. So, just a reminder, Theresa very helpfully spelled out the voting process at the beginning of the meeting. But just a reminder, anybody who is a member of Schools Forum is able to vote. It is only our local authority colleagues on the call who don't have voting rights. And so, we will go through each vote step by step. The vote will come up on your screen. You vote, and then you can click Done and close that box, and the votes will be recorded. And hopefully, I'll see the responses. But we'll see how that goes in a minute. So, Barbara, could I hand over to you, please, for the first vote? Okay, members, you should now be able to see the vote on your screen. And the first vote is to agree the funding for the services described in Annex A, delivered by the Education and Learning Team of 0.194 million. I believe I've got that right as the first one. Or was vote one to agree the savings? Sorry. Should we have agreed the savings in vote one? Agree the described savings proposals of 0.678 million? Okay. So, if everybody who's eligible, if you could vote, please. I haven't had the vote come up on my screen. So, something is going very wrong with my Teams.
Alison, I haven't had the vote come up on my screen either, but I can see that six people have. So, I'm wondering if any of those are eligible to vote now.
Well, I'm eligible to vote, so I should have had it.
Oh, okay.
I can just, sorry to come in. I can see that Colin, the vote hasn't come up on his screen, and Karen, the vote hasn't come up on his screen. We've obviously got a technical gremlin operating at the moment.
Can I ask for people who haven't had it come up on their screen, could you please put yes or no in the chat? And Theresa and Barbara will pick up the additional votes from there. So, if you have had the vote come up on your screen, and you've done it that way, that's fine. But if you haven't had it come up on your screen, then could you please put it in the chat? If you're not happy to have your vote shown publicly, then please, can you message Theresa as a direct message to Theresa, so Theresa can capture it to let us know the overall? Is that satisfactory for everybody? If anybody wants to privately vote, please message Theresa as a direct message. Okay, there should be more people who need to vote than, although some more might have voted in the chat, but I can't see, Adrian.
So, we've got several people that have voted in the chat. And Rowena's got her hand up with a question.
Hello, Rowena. I'm struggling to see the chat as well. Should I just log out and log back in? I can't see the vote, and I can't see the chat.
Give that a try, Rowena. We've obviously got some gremlins in the system today.
Thank you.
Which is typically happening on a major voting day. But that's just the way gremlins are, aren't they? They know when best to invade. Okay, I'll give everybody two more minutes, because we'll need a bit longer than usual, as we've got to do a convoluted way of doing this. But given that all of the votes that we're aware of so far are in favour, I don't think we've got an issue on waiting for extra votes to come in, because it's not in the balance. Is everybody happy? Adrian, is that all right with you?
That seems very sensible.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Barbara, could we vote? Move on to vote number two, please. And I will read out the right blurb this time. Okay, I'm assuming that some people are now seeing a box come up. To agree the funding for the services described in Annex A, delivered by the Education and Learning Team of 0.194 million. For those of us like me who can't see that, please either direct message Theresa if you want to keep it private, or put it in the chat if you're happy for it to be seen by all the other members on the call. Thank you very much. I'll give everybody another minute or so. Thank you for your patience on this, everybody. Okay, I'll hop to people. I can see there's a question come up. Rowena.
I'm really sorry. I'm just letting you know, I've come back in, and I just cannot find the chat anywhere, and I'm still not getting the vote. So, how would you like me to proceed?
If you will have had the votes listed in Paper B in paragraph two, if you would like to copy and paste that and send it in an email back to Theresa indicating how you'd like to vote, then Theresa can record that in the total number of votes for this item in the minutes. Is that all right, Rowena?
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's given everybody enough time for the second vote. So, Barbara, could we move on to the third vote, please, which is to agree the funding for the services described in Annex A, delivered by the Early Help Team of 2.148 million? Can you vote yes or no for that one, please? Either in the box in the screen to direct message Theresa or put it in the chat. Thank you. I don't know. I haven't even got a response box this time. So, I'm getting even.
The, I can see the numbers, Alison, on the forum. And also, individuals' votes are coming in on the chat as well. And I'm sure Theresa will be picking some up. So, our workaround appears to be working.
Super. Okay, thank you. Okay. Oh, I'm now suddenly getting the votes, but I'm getting them all behind. So, I'll ignore that one. And I'll see if the system has woken up for the next one. Okay, Barbara, let's go with vote four, please, which is to agree the funding for the services described in Annex A, delivered by the Virtual School for Looked After Children of 0.345 million. If you can vote on this one now, please. I think we're rain affected today. That's what I'll put it down to. Okay, I'll give everybody just another moment to complete the vote for vote four. And there'll be one more on this paper to go. Okay, Barbara, if you could launch vote five, please, which is to agree the funding of any residual long-term redundancy costs of 0.023 million. If everybody could vote on that one in their preferred way. Thank you. Okay, just give everybody a moment or two to complete that. Thank you very much, everybody, for voting on Paper B. That now concludes Paper B. So, we can now move on to Paper C, which is the Early Years DSG Block 2122 Revised Outturn. Back over to you. Thank you, Sonia.
Thanks, Alison. I've got the same gremlins as Alison, so I'm not seeing anything. So, again, if you've got any questions you want to ask me whilst I'm talking, please just either come in or make yourself known to Adrian, because I can't see any of the chat coming up. So, the Early Years DSG Block, how the Early Years is funding, it's based on census data from January. And so, we don't get the final figure for the 2122 DSG for Early Years until July of the following year. So, we always get a change in the July, which we would then sort of gives us our overall spend for the 2122 block. So, we have a load of data that comes in towards the end of or at the end of March for the end of financial year. And then, we can work out what we think the difference is between the income that we've got in so far, but what we expect the DFE to change that in July. So, we've now had that change and what that shows. And what that shows is that there was an overall difference between the money we got in and what was actually set out provided to providers of £250,000, which is what we would have expected because we know that the early years teams, you know, they give out all the money that is due to providers. I know that the, when we did the initial outturn in, that was presented to the June Forum, it looked like the difference would be quite a bit higher, which was, that's the reason why we don't do anything earlier on because it just didn't seem, seem to sort of stack up. So particularly sort of given the the mineral increases that the early years sector have had and and the really difficult economic circumstances, not just early years providers. I do appreciate that schools are in exactly the same position. But it's, I can't see it serves any benefit to keep that £250,000 sitting in reserves when actually it it could go out and help providers. So that's what the request is, is to basically provide to distribute the remaining underspend of the 2122 Early Years DSG Block to providers in the same way that it was distributed last year where there was a half a million that was distributed out. So that's what we're voting for on today.
Thank you very much, Sonia. Amanda and Pat, as our early years members of Forum, is there anything you wanted to say today before we move to the vote?
All money is greatly appreciated.
We know, Amanda. Yes, we wish it could be more, I promise you. Pat?
Yes, I ditto that. Yeah, every little helps.
Yes, we we know it'll only chip away at, yes, what we wish it could be, but at least it's something.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Do any other, does anybody else have any questions or or points they'd like to make on this paper before we move to the vote, please?
There's a question in the chat from Darren, Alison.
Thank you. Darren, would you like to put your question? Thank you.
On in, Alison. I just wanted to check whether that funding going back, does that include to schools that have nursery provision?
I think it does, Christina, doesn't it? Christina's got the detail on how the money is set out. I think it's to all providers.
Yeah, morning, everyone. Yes, it's everybody. Anyone who's claimed early education funding will will get a percentage of this.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying, Christina. Thank you. Are there any other, oh, Pat, you've got your hand up again? Is that an old hand, Pat, or a new one? Old hand. Okay, any, any other points from anyone before we move to the vote on this paper? Thank you. Oh, okay, I'll hand over to Barbara then, please. Could you launch vote six? For Paper C, to agree that the 0.25 million of the surplus should be redistributed amongst early years providers. Ah, the votes come up on my screen this time. I hope some more of you have got that this time. But otherwise, if you vote in the way that you did for Paper B, your preferred method of voting, thank you. Super. I can see that 16 people have voted. Hurrah! Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. So that has gone through and Sonia and Christina will be in touch. We'll do the number crunching and then Christina's team will no doubt be in touch with all the early years providers about the percentage of the distribution that you'll be receiving. So thanks Schools Forum for voting that through. That's much appreciated. So we now move on to Paper D. And Paper D, if I bring up my agenda, is the DSG forecast, Sonia. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So in order to sort of make sure there's transparency with the forum as to sort of spending on the DSG blocks of actually sort of presenting an updated forecast. I know Mike presented in my absence in June the original forecast for the year. But we're now just bringing an updated forecast, which takes into account known and projected commitments for the year. And it's sort of based where we're at the 30th of September, so the most up-to-date picture that we've got. So we've got an increase in the overall overspend to 7.026 million. And it's mostly as a result of the increased demand in SEND, which has gone up. As Gemma's sharing a lot of detail in the next report, I'm not going to, and Gemma's got all the detail because she knows the service inside out. I won't go into sort of the detail because Gemma will do that much more eloquently than me. But we are making sure as part of Delivering Better Value Spend Programme, which I know Gemma and some colleagues attended in Milton Keynes last week or the week before, we are ensuring the DFE are clear that actually part of, or the problem for Suffolk, the most significant element that caused our high needs block deficit is the low level of funding received in Suffolk compared to other authorities. And that's with regards to the funding element related to the historical spend. And just to put a bit of context in that, so Suffolk receives £287 per pupil in terms of the historical element. Norfolk receive £371 per pupil. So that's on a like-for-like basis, just taking the cohort of pupils who are in mainstream and special schools in all phases. So on a like-for-like basis, if we had the same historical funding per head as Norfolk did, we would be getting an additional £8 million in Suffolk. So we would not be overspending in this year. I will absolutely admit that Norfolk is a relative outlier with regards to their historical spend and that's based on what was spent in 2017, 18. So we also, Mike and I looked at our regional, our eastern regions. And if you just looked at the average of that, what they get for historical, we would have three and a half million pounds more. So we're making sure as part of Delivering Better Value that that's really, you know, that that the DFE can see that that's why we've got this level of high needs block deficit. And I would just like to, in context, put that whilst we're showing a seven million overspend in this year, which represents about 20% of our overall, no, 10, 40% of our overall current deficit. In other regions, they're actually showing a 50 million overspend in one particular authority. They, their deficit is doubling in year. And so we're not alone. It doesn't make it any easier, but that that is the position that we're in. So I'm happy to take any questions. There's no voting. This is just for information. Just so hopefully there's no massive surprise at the end of the financial year really as to where we're at.
Thanks very much, Sonia. Does anybody have any questions on this paper? There's no silly questions. I'm conscious that we've got some new members today. So if if some of this is all sounding a bit like knitting fog, you're very welcome to ask any questions for clarification.
I'm also, if people want to email me separately afterwards, I'm quite happy to go through on an individual basis.
Thanks very much, Sonia. Robert, question from you. Thank you. Robert, you're on mute if you're asking your question.
I'm sorry. What happens in the end then? If there is a seven million pound deficit, does it just get rolled over? I mean, will it just get worse and worse? What what happens in the end?
Well, that's a very good question. So at the moment, yes, the deficit is just getting worse and worse. That's partly why we're in the Delivering Better Value in SEND programme. So there's, there's two different sorts of programmes the DFE have got in. One's the safety valve, which are the ones whose deficits are like a very, very high percentage. So one particular authority that I discuss things with, their, their current DSG deficit is 100 million. And they're in what's called the safety valve. And there are conditions to what the DFE expect them to do. They work closely with advisers from the DFE. What tends to happen in those cases is if they can stick to certain agreements with the DFE, some of that money apparently is paid off, their deficit. And the problem is for the DFE is that, like us, there's, there's going to be about 50, I think, authorities in this other programme, Delivering Better Value, who've all got smaller deficits that are creeping up. They're not going to be able to afford to do that with every, well, our ask is that it's written off. And we just have to wait and see what comes out of Delivering Better Value Programme. But at the moment, what happens, Robert, is that the the DSG deficit, so we just basically have a bank account in effect that's overspent and it just sits there. And that has to be held once the, there's a legal statute at the moment, which means that the council don't have to hold reserves from their core budget to cover that. Unfortunately, that is likely to end after this financial year. So that then puts pressure on the corporate side to then have to, in effect, hold central reserves to cover that deficit, which means the theory is with their £27 million of reserves from Core that the council could not use to fund other risks and overspends. But that's, that's not, you know, there's, we can't really influence that at the moment. So, or we can influence it in terms of the, our responses to surveys and consultations, which we have done. And we're just waiting to see what happens as a result of that. Obviously, we're doing our best to reduce it. That'll be part of the Delivering Better Value Programme, which is why, you know, what Schools Forum agreed was to transfer 0.5% of their budget to offset that. What will come to the next forum is we are, because there is some reserves equivalent to that figure in the DSG reserve, we would use that as the contribution this year rather than take it from schools budgets. But I think we we almost just have to wait and see how the Delivering Better Value Programme plays out. And I don't know whether, and Gemma may or may not have some additional information to share next. And then we just have, I think, have to wait and see, there's the added complication with the green paper as to whether the, the recommendations, part of that will be fully funded, what that means, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just, it's just a really difficult position, particularly for Gemma.
Thank you very much, Sonia. That's very good, very good. Thank you.
Gemma, I know you've got your paper next, but you wanted to come in now as well. Thank you.
Just wanted to say, I mean, I will echo some of what Sonia said and and will add to that, especially following our, our trip to Milton Keynes around Delivering Better Value last week. We did have a member from SIPFA at the event last week and they did discuss the fact that the DFE are considering putting off, holding the deficit against our, against our own reserves, are looking at putting that off for a further year. Sonia, it hasn't been announced yet, but hopefully they are considering it. So fingers crossed that we'll delay that for another, for further years.
Thank you for that update, Gemma. We'll, we'll all keep our fingers crossed and depend to which chance.
Well, who knows?
Okay, thank you. Are there, are there any other points? Jennifer?
I just wondered whether there was anything happening, if we are being funded less than other councils and areas. Is there any work going on in the background to see if that can be negotiated to change in the future?
I'm afraid, Jennifer, this, yes, this has been ongoing for many, many years already and there has been lobbying for many, many years already. And we had hoped when the National Funding Formula was first announced that there would be a levelling of funding. And some adjustments have been made as parts of the National Funding Formula have been introduced. But sadly, Suffolk hasn't particularly benefited from that so far. So the lobbying work continues, both, both at officer and at councillor level.
That's great. Thanks very much.
Can I just add to that as well? So Jenny, what, the problem we've got in Suffolk is that when the funding formula was changed, 30, I think it's 33.5% of an authority's high needs block budget is based on historical spend. And that's based on what was spent in 1718 by each authority. So comparatively Suffolk was relatively low in 1718 for all the right reasons that they were trying to be financially managed their budgets, not overspend. We can argue that actually it wasn't the right thing, particularly looking back because we're now penalised because we were low spenders in that particular year. So what's happened is, and that's basically now forms part of the National Funding Formula. So unless they get rid of that historical funding formula element, and because, this is why it's a little bit ironic that on the CSSB, they're saying we're going to get rid of the historical element because it's not fair. But they're keeping that in on the high needs block. And 33.5% of the budget, as you can imagine, is a really big amount. And that's why Norfolk gets such a lot extra compared to us because they had a much higher historical spend. And unfortunately, without basically recalibrating the whole funding formula, I think we are stuck. But that, that's why, you know, so unless they do something to even that up, we're struggling. But I think it's fair to say that there's been a lot of lobbying, a lot of letters to MPs and Secretary of State. And we're really clear that if you look at our average spend, we are absolutely on track with other authorities. Our problem is that our income isn't enough to cover that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll bring you in, Adrian, as well. Thank you.
Just, just very quickly and responding to Jennifer's question to say that our cabinet member at Councillorhood has been very proactive in, you know, lobbying MPs and also aligning that with the lobbying that the Academy Chief Executive Network has been doing with very much a joined-up campaign to try and shift this position.
That's really helpful to know. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Is there any other questions on this paper before we move on? No? Okay, right, I'll turn to you now, Gemma, for your main paper, Paper E. Thank you. So this is about the High Needs Funding and DSG Deficit Recovery Plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Alison. Good morning, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Gemma Morgan. I'm the Head of SEND Funding and Provider Services. So my paper covers four areas. I'm going to talk to you about the current deficit position. Also briefly talk to you about the 0.5% contribution from the Schools Block. And then also the additional funding, which we discussed at length at the last meeting. Wanted to talk to you about the progress and with that, and then the Delivering Better Value. So I'll go on to, I've got much more information on the Delivering Better Value following the writing of the report because developments have taken place and it's moved forward quite considerably. Okay, so if we start with the deficit position, as you can all see in the paper, we're looking at just over a seven million pounds deficit for this current financial year. Obviously, that's a predicted forecast. I think we need to just appreciate that the majority of that funding is going on top-up funding to all of our settings, both special schools and mainstream. And it's also just worth noting that we are seeing every year a growth in the number of requests for high needs funding. And it's, you know, it has to be said that when we first set up the high needs funding system with the bandings, we expected it to plateau out once the children had got a band because those bands are for life. We expected to get to a point where we would only be receiving maybe requests for the years where they were in transition years or the years where they were moving from a setting. But for it to be a pretty static system, we haven't seen that at all. The requests are coming in from all settings. And you can see from the the table that I've put into the paper, we've seen growth in years four, six and nine, which we wouldn't expect. So these are all things that now we know, as we know them, we can start using all this information to predict where we're going to be in the future, predict how we can do, what we can do moving forward. And all of this data will feed into where we are with the, the work we're doing with the Delivering Better Value. This is all information that we're sharing with the, with Newton, who are the consultants who are leading on it. I think the other thing to just point out is that we have, on average, a 14% increase in the places that we've commissioned this year compared to last. Now, if we look at national trends, that's slightly lower than what was predicted for this time. The England average is between 18 and 21%, and the statistical neighbours is 16 to 19. However, where we're projecting moving forward, we're looking, seeing that that growth is potentially going to peak for Suffolk at 23%. So we're expecting to see that demand grow even further. But that explains why we're out of kilter this year with, over the last two years, with statistical neighbours and our, and the England average, and how we'll move closer to that with them in future years. So this is all work that's been done as part of the SEND Sufficiency Plan, which is now a published, published document. So all of this information is detailed in that separately. But we do keep a track, obviously, year on year of all of our places, what we were commissioning additionally and what that is costing us. So we are seeing, at least for the money, that we are supporting more children. We've supported nearly, we are supporting nearly 1,000 more children with top-up funding than we did in previous, in the previous academic, sorry, financial year. Okay, so I'm happy to take questions as I go along. Sorry, I should have said that at the beginning. Hands, I think my chat's working. So hands up or chat and I should be able to see everybody. So I just wanted to touch on the, the DSG Deficit Recovery Plan. Now, that is published as part of these papers. It's a spreadsheet template that myself and Mike Quinton have been updating regularly, changes all the time. And we try and keep up the information. Changes all the time, and we try and keep up the information on there as relevant as possible. We had, I think, prior to Schools Forum, we had a question regarding what our savings plans were. At the, at this time, we don't have savings plans, so to speak. We have cost avoidance processes in place, for example, the Centre Capital Programme. We've just had the third phase of that agreed by Cabinet. So this is capital investment in new provision across Suffolk. So provision that we can ensure that children stay within the, the local offer. This will see us avoiding paying for costly independent settings and paying for children to travel further to the education that they're receiving. So there are, there are the mitigation that we're putting in place. And also, once, once we get further on with the work with the Delivering Better Value Programme, then obviously if we can identify other savings, then, then we will do. And I will just explain that to you in a little bit, in a little bit on this report. So as Sonia mentioned previously, Schools Forum have agreed to 0.5% contribution from the, from the Schools Block to cover, to help support with some of the deficit recovery. This will come to the forum in November for voting, because I believe it's going to be part of reserves this year as opposed to looking for the funding for next year. So that's why it's not a vote on this paper. Okay, so just moving on to additional high needs funding. So at the last meeting, I came to ask you all to vote on how we spent some of the additional funding that we received from the DFE. And we, at the time, agreed for the £97 per place to be paid for to our prus and special schools. And that's been paid, that transaction took place shortly after the meeting. Now, I was asked to meet with the High Needs Working Group on the eighth, and we met on the eighth of September. And I invited two members of Schools Forum, Darren and Andrew, to join us so I could explain in much more detail about how the money that we are, we have received is being spent. You'll see in the paper that I've included details of the additional funding that we've spent this year compared to last year on both special schools and prus. And that came to a total of just under £4.5 million. So I explained how of the 3.4, what we've spent that on, how that was split amongst the schools. And obviously, that data I shared, but obviously it's, it's of a sensitive nature, so we shared that in an anonymised way. So we also, I also showed the group the rise in requests for bands for children in special schools. And as you can see from the table in the paper, the higher bands, that we are finding, getting more and more requests for bands H and I. And in comparison, over the last two years, we've had 35 additional requests for Band I funding. And Band I funding is our bespoke exceptional funding for children who, who need more than £16,000 worth of support. So we have seen an increase of 85 requests for ban changes in the last year, and that equates to £1.6 million additional cost into those. So I broke that all down with the group, explained how we spent the money, satisfied the, obviously, if there's any questions today, I'm happy to answer, satisfied the queries. And we agreed as a group that I'd bring back this to the, to the group to explain in more detail how we, how we're spending that, that 3.4 million. Okay, any questions?
Thanks very much for that, Gemma. That's really clearly explained, and it was a very clear paper. Robert? You're on mute, Robert?
I'm so sorry, I haven't done this for so long on Zoom. I'm really rusty, so it's pathetic. I'm sorry. Who actually decides, who decides on this banding? Is it a panel of people who, I mean, how difficult is it to move up a band or how does the process work?
So on a termly basis, Robert, we ask all of our schools to submit, so mainstream and special schools, to submit a spreadsheet which outlines all of the children that are in their provision and what band they're on, and then put in a request for any increases, decreases or new requests. And they come through with supporting evidence from the school to demonstrate what provision is being put in place for those children and the cost of that provision, the needs of those children. That then goes to a panel of SENCOs. So we have SENCOs who are currently working in schools come to our group. Have you just lost me, Alison?
I can hear you, but not see you.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know what happened there. Sorry about that.
Don't worry.
So sorry, we have a panel of SENCOs, so SENCOs who are currently working within a range of our schools. And we have members of our Special Education Service who get together, like I say, on a termly basis, and they moderate every request for either, like I say, an increase, a decrease or, or a new request. Then that is, then that is quality assured. So we go for a QA2 process, and then those results are, are shared with the school. So it is a kind of a robust system, well, but, but fair, Robert, so that all, all schools have the opportunity to request high needs funding.
I'm sure it is. That's great. Thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you, thank you.
So Alison, if, oh, sorry.
I've just one more question.
Sorry, Stephen.
Stephen, yeah?
Following on from that, so a decrease in band kind of has to be initiated by the school, does it? Because what other processes are there to check for that? Because obviously that would require the school to put forward to reduce their funding.
Yeah, so Stephen, I mean, it's the, it's the, I mean, obviously the school have the, have the closest relationship with the children. So would be the, well, there is, it could be sparked through an annual review. So if a child has an EHCP, then that, that will be discussed as part of the annual review as well. And if it comes through that process, then the, the, the school would still initiate it, but it would be a conversation with a, with a caseworker from within the Inclusion Service.
And I believe there is some audits that are done sometimes as well.
Yes. So yes, sorry, Alison. So as part of the work that Joyce Settle does, who is my High Needs Funding Lead, she goes into the school and does, enter a variety of schools and does audits on what they're spending their high needs funding on.
Thank you.
Okay. So Alison, shall I go on to?
Do one. I'm just checking if there's an old hand or a new hand from Robert.
My hand is stuck. I'm sorry. I don't know. I can't, I can't remove it. I'm sorry, but I'm okay.
Karen, sorry, sorry, Gemma, I'm interrupting you again. Karen's got a question now. Thank you.
Yeah, I've, I've just put something on chat, but I just wanted to know how much impact Covid's had on this whole process and whether that's being taken into account by the additional funding. And is there a particular age group? I mean, I can guess what the age group is, but is there evidence to show that there's an age group that's being unduly affected by Covid?
So Karen, what, I haven't got the specific data with me, but what we did when, so once Covid hit, we started, we added a process to the moderation so that we asked schools that if the child's, if the, the needs had changed due to Covid, that we would apply a temporary ban and that we would review that on a termly basis. So we don't expect, so when we give a child a band normally, they would have a band for life. So that band moves with them throughout their whole educational career. But what we've said with the children who the schools believe, and we believe, have had a change in their needs because of Covid, then they were recorded on temporary bans. And, and that was refreshed on a, on a termly basis. And some of those have been, to be honest, the majority of those have been removed. I haven't got the data to hand, but I can get it, Karen, because Joy, again, Joyce Settle has recorded all of that information and that, and she, and within that, she will have captured the age ranges as well.
Yeah, that'd be really interesting. And I'm just wondering whether there's going to be a long term legacy for the current young children, early years particularly, but those moving through into year one, key stage one. You know, whether they're going to have a greater impact that will be longer lasting. So it'll, yeah, so that data will be really interesting.
Yeah, like I say, we are, we are keeping an eye on it as best we can from the information that we, we receive and that we have. So it is an interesting question, Karen. So yeah, I will dig out that data.
Thank you. So I think, Gemma, the next time you do a paper for us, if there's just a paragraph or two in, in that to reflect that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Will do.
Stephen?
Sorry, just on page two of the paper, you, it articulates a number of the changes, but there's a line that says additional staffing funding, 1.1 million. It, it doesn't mention anywhere that I can see what that relates to and, and what's that delivering.
Of course. So that was from our core funding. So that isn't from the high needs block. Though this was funding that was given to the Inclusion Service following the Lincolnshire review that we received, that we had about 18 months ago, where the, the findings from that review, one of the recommendations, well, and what, what we found from that was that we needed an injection of staff within our family services team and wider to ensure that we could meet the needs of children, make sure that we could be responsive to families, we could make sure that our education, health and care plans and the needs assessments were completed in a timely fashion. So that 1.1 million is not included in the overspend. It's, it's part of our core funding.
True. Thank you.
And I don't know if everybody can see the chat, but I'll just add a comment that Christina has made that in early years, that their, their team have seen an increase in claims since the pandemic. So thank you for adding that, Christina. Okay, I'll let you carry on with presenting us your paper now. Thank you, Gemma.
Sorry, one last thing, Alison. I won't be much longer. So I just want to update you on the Delivering Better Value Programme. So, so as Sonia said, we are one of 55 authorities in the first tranche of the Delivering Better Value Programme. There are, there are three tranches. And we, we've just, we've just started phase one of the tranche, which is where we are looking at the data, very much the data and the finances. So we have looked at, you know, what, what we spend our budget, similar to the, the tables that I provide in this report, really, what we've, we're spending our money on, how many children we're working with. And then also some pupil level data that we've shared with the consultants. So that's all being submitted. And we met with, there was eight local authorities who met with Newton, who were the consultant last week in Milton Keynes, to start looking at how we identify problems and how we work to solve them. All local authorities have different concerns, which is quite interesting, actually, that although we are all in deficit positions, it's for many different. One thing that we were all very clear about was the level of funding and the fact that we want, although we are, obviously, we want Newton to work with us to look at what we can do to make savings, we have to be clear that it could be that it's just that we're not funded enough. Because as a local authority, Suffolk are already doing a lot of things that the other local authorities aren't doing. So our banding system is, you know, is fair, transparent and robust. Some of the local authorities still don't have a banding system, although they should. We have agreements with our, we have commissioning agreements with our providers about what we, what happens if we go over numbers. Some local authorities still don't have that either. So we've, we're very much in a position where we have a robust system around our commissioning and our contracting. So it's really interesting, it is really interesting to understand from other local authorities what can be done to improve our, our deficit. But Newton were very clear that if the answer is that it's because the local authorities aren't funding enough, they will happily take that back to the DFE, not as the overall answer for everything, but as a, you know, as a, a position that most of the local authorities are in. Because I said, my point I made to Newton was that overall, we're £27 million deficit before we start looking at the recovery from the, from the Schools Block. However, we may, I can't imagine we'll ever recover that deficit. We may be able to overspend by less in the future, but I think we'll even struggle to break even where we're, unless we receive more funding. Because if, you know, seven million pounds this year, we'd have to make considerable savings just to come in online. And, and that would have obviously a detrimental effect on, on all of our providers and the provision that we can provide for the children. So I just wanted to reassure everybody that Newton are really, they understand the position. They're really understanding of, of what local authorities are facing. And they aren't trying to just find a solution that will suit the DFE. They are really working with us to, to make sure that we explore all options. So, so, so like I say, the first phase of data and finance is happening now. And then in November, the second phase, which is around the operational side of things, so what can be done operationally to, to make things better, to look at how we can save money. And then the third phase is the implementation. And by the end, well, not it being implemented, but how it could be implemented. And then that ends with the opportunity for us to apply for a grant of up to £1 million to support us in the implementation plan and the implementation stage. So that's the process, and that's what we'll be going through over the next few months.
Thanks very much, Gemma. It's, it's really helpful, I think, for all forum members to hear the approach that Newton are taking and the fact that in going along a meeting with other local authorities in a similar deficit position, that you didn't suddenly come away with thinking, oh, there's an obvious answer over there that we haven't already done. And as you said at the High Needs Meeting, that actually a lot of local authorities were asking for your time to learn from you and what we're already doing in Suffolk, because we seem to be ahead of the curve of some other local authorities in the measures that were already taken. So I, yeah, the bottom line is, as we've believed for a number of years, that it is our, our, our funding position and our, the disparity that we've got with other similar authorities is the key to it. But it will be, it's helpful that we, it's not just us repeatedly saying to that, to the DFE, as we have been for a number of years, that now there's this external oversight from Newton that is going to, to give that independent position back to the DFE about what they see. So that's really helpful. Wendy, you have a question. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, Gemma.
Hi, Wendy.
I may be out of the loop. I'm just, just checking the values against each band. Have they changed?
No, the values, no, they haven't.
So these bands were introduced back in 2017?
2019, I believe.
So if the band values don't change and match the cost increases, cost of living, staffing costs, all of those sorts of things, then when people are working out the costs of the provision that they're providing to children in school, then they're going to be applying for a higher band because the costs of that provision are increasing, but the value of the band isn't increasing. So if we don't increase the value of the bands, which we haven't done for four years, then schools are going to be looking at having to ask for a higher band to meet the costs of the provision that they're providing for those children.
So I think some of these, yeah.
Admin there for schools, a lot of admin for the local authority. Is there a cost saving by actually putting a cost of living, cost of whatever on the bands?
So I think there's a couple of answers to that, Wendy. I mean, obviously, part of our lobbying to government is that they haven't increased, you know, the place funding for, since 2012. So we need them to do that in order for us to be able to then, and obviously give us more funding in order for us to increase our bands, because increasing our bands just increases our deficit. However, and I think this will come into the next conversation, Alison, around the, I think there's a discussion around cost of living next, isn't there? But however, the bands are based on need, although there is a financial element, they are very much based on, on need. So we would have to, a child wouldn't necessarily go up a band if they, just because their provision was becoming more costly, because the process is that each band is associated with a, a level of support that a child needs. But I do take your point, Wendy, and it's, it's the case across the board with everything. You know, every, every school is asking for, is needing more money because of the cost of living. And at the moment, until we, and, and like Adrian said earlier, Rachel Hood, a councillor Hood, has contacted the DFE again recently to lobby them about our funding. But, and part of that is that for special schools, I know you're a mainstream school, but for special schools, place funding's been £10,000 since 2012. So 2012, yeah, sorry. So, you know, that hasn't, that they, it, it needs to be a whole system response to this. But you are absolutely right, and your point is very valid.
Yes, indeed it is. Yeah, and something we all recognise. Robert, back to you. Thank you. And you need to come off mute again, Robert, please.
Ah, sorry. Gemma, yes, not wanting, wanting to be cynical, but obviously Delivering Better Value is something you've been doing for ages. Have you found being in the first tranche valuable? Or have you been giving others, you know, your, your really good ideas from Suffolk? If I can put it that way. I mean, has it been worth your time?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't been doing it for that long. I mean, it does feel like we have, but we haven't really. I mean, and this was, last week was the first time that things really sort of kicked off with the, the meeting Newton and a meeting of the local authorities. Yeah, I think it was of value, Robert. It was interesting. I mean, they talked a lot about things that could be done and how they could be modelled and how we look at our problems. And so a lot of it was very much about developing new, developing our skills in, in looking at the problems and how we identify what those problems are and plan the solution out of it. So that was quite interesting. And some of the local authorities, I mean, it's always, it's always nice to meet another local authority that's overspending more than us.
Yes.
Although that sounds unfair, but, and, and some of them have, and this is something that I, you know, I argued from our point of view. One of the local authorities said their biggest concern was that they don't have inclusive schools. Now, I don't feel that for Suffolk. I think we have really inclusive schools. So their challenge is, is very different in comparison to what our challenge is. So it was interesting, Robert, yeah. And I'm, I'm optimistic, optimistic that, you know, it'll be, it'll be a good, it will be a good and efficient piece of work, that'd be effective.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Gemma. You've given us a really comprehensive update again this morning. It's been very valuable. Thank you. Thanks, Gemma. You've given us a really comprehensive update again this morning. It's been very valuable. Thank you very much for your time and everything you and all your team are doing to try and manage everything in this difficult space. It really is appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Alison. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, which dovetails nicely into what we've just been talking about, which is a discussion about the cost of living pressures that you're all facing. And we're, if, if as a result of this conversation, that you all feel that on behalf of Schools Forum, you would like me to write to the Secretary of State to express our concerns about all the different cost of living pressures, then I'd be happy to do so. But we'd really like to gather the, the range of different experiences that you're all having in your different settings about what those cost of living pressures look like. Now, I've sort of got a checklist here that, you know, the school where I'm a Chair of Governors and, and in conversation with colleagues from the local authority that we've discussed already. But it'd be really good to hear your views first. And I've got some feedback from a special school head teacher as well that I'd like to feed into the conversation later too. But I'll open it to the floor and first come, first served, who, who would like to, to give a flavour of, of your real concerns about the cost of living pressures at the moment for your settings. Thank you. Robert, your hand is up, but I'm not sure if it's still up from when we were talking to Gemma or whether you'd like to start the conversation on this one.
It's a stuck hand and a gremlin, I'm sorry.
You're welcome to start the conversation though, but Karen, I think you were next. So I'll, I'll come to you. Thank you.
All right, just making sure I've got everything on. Thank you, Alison. I represent pupil referral units and there are a number of concerns, shall we say. Certainly, one of the biggest things is our unknown costs. We do not know what we're going to be faced with. Teacher pay rises, support staff pay rises, because those are all big unknowns. So although we can budget for what we think might happen, we don't know. But that's a universal issue in the country at the moment, I guess. The other issue from my point of view is very much the increased complexity of needs. And it isn't around the high tariff funding necessarily, but it's the, the extremities of needs, partly driven by Covid, but not exclusively. And that's another issue that would, again, and, you know, our, our particular school has been in particular set of circumstances. But we are faced nonetheless with those issues and trying to make sure that we have a range of very creative approaches to address those needs, which of course all cost. So they're just a, some, a snapshot, really.
As helpful as a starting point for the conversation. Thanks for giving us your experience, Karen. Wendy.
Right, yeah. I, I think there's this, this, the huge uncertainty for us as, as schools is my feeling on that is that's something that we've actually lived with for probably the last, the last eight years. My year two and three budgets have been a work of fiction until the next thing comes through. I think the local authority are probably in that position as well. I think my, my biggest concern at the moment is the, 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 the lack of control people feel and the, the uncertainty for families. And every time you watch the news, it's another uncertainty that hits. And very anecdotally, I mean, I'm in quite a nice part of Ipswich. Most of my families are sort of middle class. We've obviously got some high levels of need and we try and support those families. But just anecdotally, in family, the other day, father's mental health issues have been really exacerbated because he's been working at the docks and the strike has really impacted on family circumstances. And I'm, I'm imagining there will be lots of other families in that situation, certainly in the south of Suffolk. And little things like that, adding in the uncertainty, especially now when people are being told, well, your bill's not, might not be capped after April. And that's all they'll hear. They won't think, well, actually there will be some new system put into place. And I don't know how people can't control any of that. That's outside of their control. And how can we somehow be trying to reassure people or to get people to just worry about the here and now and not worry beyond that? And our staff as well. I mean, you know, we've got schools, I'm just talking about your high needs banding. The people that are delivering that are some of the worst paid, who could probably go and earn more working in a supermarket than they can now earn working as a teaching assistant in a school. And so, yeah, I just think there's, that uncertainty is putting a lot of stress on people. Yeah, it's great, isn't it? I just, I just want to stop watching the news, but it's, it's, it's too interesting, too fascinating.
It draws us all back in all the time, doesn't it? I know. So other people's experience for their education settings and what the cost of living pressures look like in their settings? Colin, I'll come to you. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning and thank you, Alison. Representing the post sixteen sector, specifically further education. I appreciate that all educational settings are struggling at the moment. Our, our funding, pay rises for staff are not funded essentially by, by government. We have to find those savings ourselves to be able to pay, pay rises for staff. Linking into the previous discussions that we've had, the biggest impact we're seeing at the moment are the staff in business support areas and student support areas who are leaving and they are going to, as the test goes, because they can get more money per hour there. Yesterday alone, we had five learning support assistants resign. It, we are facing, and this isn't just for West Suffolk College. I've spoken to colleagues across post sixteen. We are all facing very, very similar, real problems. And again, come back to our students and the families and going back to Wendy's point that she made earlier. They are really struggling. We have students who have taken employment as well as doing their studies because they've been asked to contribute to the family income. The bursary situation, because we're quite fortunate, we have bursaries that we can award to, to students. I'm making hardship payments and there's some really tough decisions that we're being faced with. So I think if a message could go back to, to government, and I think this is collective, we are in education. I believe everybody is seeing these challenging situations and making some very tough, difficult decisions. Thank you.
No, thank you for, for your experience. That's helpful, Colin. Thank you. Pat, come over to you for the early years experience now. Thank you.
So I'm just trying to turn on. Good morning, everyone. Yeah, I mean, early years, we are very used to struggles. And a lot of our problems are very similar to all, you know, hearing what other people have to say. Food is a big issue for us. At a point where some settings might like to provide preschool meals or free nursery meals as such. Because I mean, obviously there is something available at schools. But just at the point where young children need a good balanced diet. You know, we don't have that pot to, to go into. And whereas I don't know that some managers, I know myself, I've wanted to give free school or free nursery meals for a long time. We're not able to do it because if we do, it's got to come out of somebody's pocket. Our pockets not deep enough and very often, parents' pockets aren't deep enough to, to be able to do that. You know, it, it's, that's just one, you know, issue. The, the issue of wages, obviously, we are the lower band, you know, most of our staff are on minimum wage. And yes, of course, if we can't put their wages up to meet the cost of living rises, what, what's going to happen? They're going to walk. And then what happens? You know, recruitment is just awful. And really, it's quite depressing, really.
For those parents who are expected to make a contribution to some of the hours for their pupils in their, in your settings, are you starting to find those parents are having to think twice about that? Because there's a real balance, isn't there, between trying to, trying to work and cover the childcare or not being able to afford the childcare and deciding not to work?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, that, that's a, a, a good point. I mean, they do have to look, whereas, you know, especially because we, we go from babies to school age. You know, people will come and say, oh, I can afford one, one day a week, but I can't go to two, which actually for the benefit of the child is not, not brilliant. And like the two-year-olds we get are generally the two-year-olds that are funded. And, and the, and the preschool children with the three-year-olds, they literally, especially summer born, which are vulnerable anyway, is, oh, if a child turns three, say, in May, they won't actually start preschool in a lot of cases until September because they can't afford to pay that bit in the middle.
Thank you, Pat. That's, that's really helpful. Stephen, I'll come to you next. Thank you.
I'd echo everything everyone said, and I think sending a letter is a very good idea. One, one of the things, it's not kind of the DFE that is having a big problem is that the, the NJC kind of pay scale and pay rise takes so long to be agreed. So we are losing people, cleaners, caterers, TAs to other sectors where those, like the NHS, for instance, where those pay rises are agreed far quicker. So we're, we're not making a fair comparison. So I realise that's not in Suffolk's control, but actually that entire process is just too long and causes us to lose staff regularly. So I think flagging that up is, is, is important as well.
I, I recognise what you're saying there. Yes, definitely. Thank you, Stephen. Jennifer, I'll come to you next. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'd echo all of my colleagues' views on the challenges with recruitment and retention and salary costs. I think the other thing we are seeing is the impact of the contracts that we have increasing, certainly where they're quite people-led in terms of cleaning catering, where we've outsourced this because obviously their costs are increasing and then they're passing them on to us. So it's not only our own employed staff that we're getting impacted by. It's the, the contracts externally where they're certainly where they're very heavily people-based and that's, that's having quite a big impact on us as well.
And, and it's other goods and services I expect as well from our own, my own school's experience. It's those other, yeah, other things that you buy in as well, that the cost of all of those is also increasing. I hadn't heard anybody reflect on that yet, but yes, that's certainly.
I think a ream of paper now has gone up something three, threefold from what it was a few months ago. It's, yeah, it's, it's getting really challenging with the cost of everything going up.
Thank you for your input. Thank you. Maria, come to you next. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd agree with everything everyone said. I think one of the things that I have done for the very first time in my entire just over twenty years as a head teacher is I've actually asked parents for a contribution so that we can actually fund our arts and DT curriculum. Because the cost of materials, especially where you're using consumables like that at such a rate, has now reached the point where we, we haven't got the funding to be able to do that. The other thing that we took the decision to do, we have our own catering in-house. We took the decision that we would review the menus, so we would still meet the nutritional standards, but we are now offering minimal choice. It's this is your lunch, this is the vegetarian option. And all those things that we used to offer as kind of enticements and to encourage children to have a more healthy diet, like always having a salad bar available, always having fruit available that they could have in addition to the main meal. We have had to completely stop that. So actually, I think we're now getting to the point where we're doing the bare minimum. But even that is becoming unaffordable. And I, I do think, you know, as everyone has said, it's, it's about the, the level of stress that we have all lived under for the last two and a half years. And actually, that continued feeling of stress and what that is actually doing. And the knock-on effect in terms of the number of safeguarding concerns that we are putting in on a daily basis. The, the amount of concerns that, that we are, you know, so whether that's for early help or more serious, that has increased significantly in the last year. And I think that is directly related to the financial pressures that families are under. All the research says that when families are under financial pressure, family breakdowns happen. And you're more likely to have things like domestic violence, neglect, et cetera, et cetera. And I think, you know, it's not just about looking, for example, on, are we seeing increases on requests for SEND bandings? But are we seeing additional requests for those other kinds of support services that help families in times of crisis?
Yes, definitely. I'd, I'd echo that as well, Maria. I know our family support workers in the schools I'm involved in are, are certainly seeing an increase in, in need for support to families. So I'm sure others echo that as well. If there aren't any other hands up at the moment, I will just quickly summarise some feedback that I had from Sally Garrett, the head teacher at the Ashley School, who when she heard we would be discussing this item today, very helpfully sent me an email with some experiences from the special school perspective. And there's quite a lot here, so I'll, I'll just pull out some key points. But we will make sure that, that when we put our, our full letter together for the Secretary of State, that we, we cover everything that, that Sally mentioned. And some of these reflect some of the points that some of you have made already around increases in core funding levels are welcome, but they, they don't meet all of the costs that you've seen increasing. The proposed funding increases, we'll see most schools get a naught point five percent uplift. And of course, we know that inflation is running at around 10% at the moment. Although recognising that when those levels were set, the Treasury had inflation levels at sub two percent. The salary increases are reflected and again, recognising that that risks losing staff because of not being able to pay them enough, and as much money as they could get in, in other sectors. And goes on to talk about just not being able to find any other cost-cutting areas in some of the ways that some of you have spoken about. You've trimmed and trimmed as much as you can and there isn't really anything left to trim. And one of the key points that she made, it'd be interesting for other academies on the call to see if you have any concerns like this as well, and I will read this bit in full. Is she said that for academies that are about to enter the annual audit cycle, we need to be open and transparent about the genuine prospect of insolvency. The auditors are required to make a judgment as to whether each trust is a going concern. And this should look at the trust funds into twenty three, twenty four and beyond. If current government commitments are insufficient to project a balanced budget outcome for twenty two, twenty three and demonstrate further deterioration to the bottom line in twenty three, twenty four, the auditor should give a going concern qualification, i.e. state explicitly that without change, the trust will be insolvent. Governors and school leaders should not try and dodge this with suggestions of savings down the line, nor institute unacceptable staff restructurings, which would be detrimental to pupil provision, just to get the books to balance. So that's the point that Sally made, particularly about the position for academies and being solvent into the future. I don't know if anybody else wants to echo that or add anything further to that. Stephen.
I'm, I'm in order to buy background, so I would absolutely echo those comments. And it is a very valid point about not putting false costed plans. That is where the NHS comes unstuck and things like mid-staffs happened. So schools need to be realistic in their plans and it's a fair comment.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Wendy.
That's all well and good. When you're expected to put forward a, a budget that balances for three years' time, the only way in a school to show that budget balance is to reduce staffing. Because, well, anything between, yeah, anything between eighty percent and ninety five percent, I've been at with staffing costs. So there is no other way of doing it. And three years ago, our Finance Director for our trust, he said to me, if you're a business, Wendy, I'll be telling you to liquidate. Because that you could see that then the money suddenly appears from somewhere and you can, it comes in and then you carry. Why are we carrying a big carry forward? Because that's the only way to keep ourselves running until something else changes. So, yeah, I'd love to be able to say this is the real deficit against what my school's looking like in three years' time. But I wouldn't get through, wouldn't get that through the trust. But maybe that's what we should all be doing.
That's a valid point to make. Thank you, Wendy. Are there any other thoughts on cost of living that people would like to make? Robert, I'll come to you. Thank you.
Well, not quite cost of living, but certainly on economisation. You know, I'm from Thurston. And we're one of the sort of quite few rare maintained large schools in Suffolk. And certainly we're slightly worried that if we were either forced or have to go into economisation, how the money would work. So it's very interesting hearing how. So it's very interesting hearing colleagues looking ahead and putting together realistic budgets. And that's at least one thing, you know, we do have the support of the Suffolk County Council because we're maintained. So it would, it would go into our decision as to whether we feel we should be looking at academyisation because of the cost of living and the fact that everything is going up and becoming more expensive.
Thank you for that reflection.
It was useful to hear to colleagues.
Thank you. Anything else anybody would like to feed in? If anything comes to mind after the meeting, you think, oh, I, I, I think this is a really important aspect of cost of living in education settings that we haven't captured so far, then do email it to us, to me, Sonia, Adrian. And, and we'll feed it into the, the letter that we're going to put together on, on behalf of Schools Forum. And I know that the group of academies have already done some of your own lobbying. And I don't know, I know there's a new group of the remaining maintained schools. And I don't know if any of you who are members of that have thought about collectively putting in some lobbying of, of your, of your own as well. Because, you know, we've, we've just got to try and make our voice heard. What difference it will make to DFE and the Treasury, none of us can say right now, but all we can do is express, express the need and hope to be heard, isn't it? Any, any final points on that or have we rounded that one off? Adrian, I'll come to you. Thank you.
Just a very quick final point, if I, if I may, Alison. I think the, the comments people have made are, are really insightful. And sadly, I guess we're not particularly surprised by some of them in the current climate. And I, I'm concerned, as I know, school leaders are concerned that some of these pressures and challenges detract from schools' core business, which is about educating children and, and fulfilling their potential. There is a rallying call from, from, from every part of the system that we, we continue to, to, to challenge for, for fairer funding and the appropriate support in other parts of the public sector. Again, just to assure people, I think although the school system and the education system in Suffolk is complex, 41 academy trusts, 103 maintained schools. I think there is very strong collaboration across the sector, all the way from the Primary Head Teachers Association, the Secondary Head Teachers Association, the Academy Chief Executive Network, the Developing Suffolk Education Partnership, very much driven by the academy heads, but with local authority maintained heads linking in with that group. It really, more than ever, it's the time for us to push forward on this. And we are being supported significantly by our cabinet member and Suffolk politicians in challenging our local MPs to fully understand the detail of this. I think we'll be able to write a much richer sort of letter as a result of the conversation. And I'm pleased we put this item on the agenda. Thanks, Alison.
Indeed. Thank you. Alan, I'll turn to you. Thank you.
Thanks. Adrian's always a very hard act to follow. And just like, thanks very much to colleagues for their, their very useful contributions. And it's no doubt an incredibly difficult time. And I won't repeat what Adrian said, but just say, we, we never miss an opportunity to lobby for better funding for, for schools, whether that's through the ADCS Association or Director of Children's Services. And our, our meetings with the DFE, through the MPs and, and as, as Adrian said, Rachel's taking a very strong and robust line in terms of lobbying for funding for us. But these are, these are very difficult times and they will last for a while sadly. We'll all pull through and get, get them through them together, but it will be tough. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you all very much for your contributions to that discussion. That, that they're all valuable points. And it, it was really valuable to have it here where we've got people from so many different education settings all together to hear each other's experiences, but know that at the bottom line, it's a challenge for all of us. And it's, it's a bit sad that it's the last item on our agenda today, that it's a bit of a low note. But all we can do is support each other and keep lobbying and, and, you know, we'll find a way through it together. And just to know that, you know, always speak up, always reach out if, if you need any particular support. Don't struggle along on your own. We know as leaders in, in, in each of your education settings, what, what a tough position that can be to be in. So please, please do always reach out if you, if you need some support. So moving on, we come to any other business. I haven't got anything noted that anybody wanted to raise, but does anybody want to quickly step in with anything today? Otherwise, we can move on. Items for the forward agenda. Adrian, I'll turn to you or Sonia. Do either of you want to come in and talk about what we'll be coming up with next? Thank you.
Yes. Shall I say that briefly, Adrian? So
Thanks, Sonia.
Obviously, the November forum will be very shortly with us in four weeks' time. So the, the only items I think we've got on the agenda so far are the voting on the de-delegated. So this is where, so this is only for maintained school sector, where they would vote to de-delegate some of their monies back to local authority. So that will be coming up. And also Mike will be presenting the APT, the Authority Pro forma tool. And as part of that, so that's basically, we'll just be sharing if there's any changes in any of the funding factors. As part of that, we'll be asking for the vote on moving the 0.5% of the Schools Block that's currently in reserves to offset the DSG deficit. I don't know if Mike's got anything more to add, but I think at the moment that's all we've got on the agenda.
No, nothing to add, Sonia. I think we're just quite lucky in Suffolk because we've adopted the national funding formula. So all it will be is a brief update on any changes to some of the factors. And just to sort of continue on the, the low note, provisionally next year, the increase to Suffolk Schools Block funding is around 2%. Just to put things into context. So, yeah, but, but you know, that, that could change in the next few months. We don't know, but I'll be working on a 2% increase on the, the Schools Block submission.
Thank you, Mike. So bring, so bring note to end on today. But, but thank you for letting us all know because it's, it's important to, to be aware of the facts and not hide from them. So thank you for that. All we can do is keep our fingers crossed and see how things progress, but we'll bear that in mind. So the next meeting, as Sonia just mentioned, is on the 22nd of November. So I look forward to seeing you all then and hope you have a good day as best you can in the meantime. Thanks all very much. Goodbye for now.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.